And welcome to the December 12, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. Our one and only city council meeting for December. So everybody's got their Christmas ties on and all that kind of stuff looking good. The prayer and the pledge will be led by the Kids Connecting Kids for Christ from the Life Bridge Christian Church. The invocation will be led by Christine Mason. The pledge of allegiance led by the group. And the children's director is Rhonda Witcher. Would you please come forward?
Last prayer. Lord, we are, Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness. Write through, write thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful solution. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all very much. Y'all got y'all, y'all Santa Claus list made? Uh-oh. You know, it's naughty and nice. Everybody's been nice? All right, good deal. Mamas are back there shaking their head no. I'm kidding y'all. Thank y'all very much and Merry Christmas to y'all. Thank you very much for y'all coming. Tell Pastor Tom hello.
I should.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
Okay. All right, before we get started with the business of the meeting, we have one little presentation to make. Shelley Ballinger, would you please come forward?
Black lady. Now. She looked askew.
We've got good news and bad news. Good news is Shelley has been a very great employee for the city for the last 15 years. That is the great news.
Stop it.
I don't know about the 30 years, so, no, we're kidding, Shelley. Here on behalf of the city is a little token of our appreciation, and that really is a diamond right there. It's not really a 15.
No, it's not.
Well, you know, budgets are kind of tight this year, though. But you know, if you go right back over there and send your letter to Santa Claus, I bet he'll get you a diamond. Thank you. Ho, ho, ho. Okay. Let's see, we got, oh, we got citizen comment tonight, and right off the bat, we have Ms. Tanya Kerr. I didn't mean to put you on the spot up front, but that's just the way the cards were given to me.
I brought my glasses.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
That might not work out for me. Honorable members of Longview City Council, good evening. I'm Tanya Kerr with MSB Government Services, one of the nation's most successful and highly regarded collection firms with happy clients in over 38 states. MSB is also the only firm contracted to collect on the state of Texas surcharge program, bringing in multi-millions of dollars in revenue for our great state of Texas. We also collect for the state comptroller as well as many others. MSB knows how to collect delinquent debt for government entities. That's all we do. Your own city-employed department heads and selection committee recommended that you hire MSB. Tonight, I only want to address point by point the misinformation, and I'll do my best to attempt to satisfy any outstanding questions from last month's council meeting. For the record, MSB has successfully refuted every objection raised at the November 14 council meeting. MSB responded to a public request for proposal with good intentions and the hope to work with the city of Longview. We responded exactly as requested, and after two rounds of very intense finalist presentations, MSB was chosen as the recommended vendor by eight points. I want to remind you that the livelihood of hundreds of hard-working, loyal Texans relies on us, MSB, keeping our valued clients and growing our business. So we really want to make sure that nobody repeats the fact that we aren't the right agency. There are many right agencies out there, and we potentially could be the right agency for Longview, Texas. It was stated that MSB did not provide our recovery rates as requested. However, as I said that night, and I say it again tonight, we did provide those recovery rates on page 53 of our response, and every firm was required to provide them in every response submitted to the city of Longview. Nowhere in the RFP or in any conversation confirmed by your own purchasing department did anyone ask if MSB had a prior contract with the city. We always expect and we count on old clients returning to MSB. I have a documentation here in the staple document, which shows MSB contracted with the city of Longview from August 6, 1997, for a six-month contract and three consecutive six-month extensions, and it went full term. In the 13 years since that time, much like the city of Longview, MSB has evolved and improved. We spent millions on technology infrastructure, we've never had an ethics violation, and our quality control expertise are just a few of the things that set us apart from our competitors. Regarding the score for local office, that it should be more heavily weighted, by state law, this must be relevant to debt collection from municipal court, utility, and EMS. These accounts are not typically litigated, and any firm's representatives with tactical knowledge about the contracted collection services for the three city departments should respond to your office anytime at your request. We understand that a direct line to the collections firm is imperative. MSB will always provide direct lines and cell numbers. Everyone at MSB has a direct phone line and cell phones available to any designated employee of the city at all times. Your constituents will always be able to reach a live representative during business hours. It's been suggested that debtors who owe the city funds do not have cell phones or access to the Internet. However, our company collects nothing but government debt, and MSB actually documents that 80% of all of our payments are submitted in one of the self-serve forms that we listed in our proposal. In two years, we've actually seen a 400% increase. Last month, I told you it was 300%. It's actually a 400% increase across all socioeconomic demographics in those types of payments. Pay to city is always allowed and encouraged as well. Now, we matched your former vendors' published commission rates for EMS and utility at 12%. Texas mandates a 30% add-on for municipal court, and your city manager chose to umbrella all three of those departments under one contract so that you could ensure that all three departments would receive the same effort and attention by whichever firm you choose. Any disregard for that subject, any disregard for that, I should say, is subject to termination of the entire contract. Saw Ms. Williams take a drink of water, and I think it made me want one. While MSB collects for many municipal courts, we also have a large client base of utility and EMS clients. That creates an economy of scale. That allows us to charge a lower fee for those type account types. Our commission is directly tied to our effort, so to suggest that Longview taxpayers should pay more to get more makes no business sense at all. Pay more to get more should not apply on this contract. Now, there is a very good reason not to start this whole process over again. You guys, last year, in that 12-month period, this city of Longview lost more than $100,000 while the committee did what it was supposed to do and implemented that RFP process. You were not submitting for collections the entire previous year of 2013. You now stand to lose tens of thousand dollars more in tax dollars with another six-month delay if you go back to the RFP process. We understand that you've been asking questions for weeks, and we want to provide answers. We have been, and we will continue to always be, available to any of you here in the city council and in the city. In closing, I only ask that you vote tonight with the full knowledge of the services and work plan that makes MSB your city's first choice on this contract. Your committee chose MSB because we offered the strongest work plan with tactical discussions in those presentations on how we would actually improve Longview's collections efforts.
Uh-oh, the bell's going.
It's okay. MSB is your best choice, and I thank you for having me.
Did you need more time?
No, sir, that's it.
You sure?
I appreciate you giving me the time.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Steve Crane.
First of all, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Same to you.
I'm here because I read an article in the paper earlier this month, and it talked about the childhood poverty rate increasing pretty significantly in Gregg County. And a few months before that, in about August or September, there was another article in the paper that talked about the increasing number of uninsured in Gregg County. And these are kind of disturbing trends. And I'm here tonight just to, first of all, thank Longview News Journal for bringing those issues to our attention and the reporting that they did. And then to, this would be the natural place, I would think, the city of Longview, the city council, to see if there isn't something that we as a community can do. And I'm not suggesting that there's a solution. I'm not sure I really understand, I mean, the figures speak for themselves, but what is at the core of that? What's causing the problem? What the solutions might be? I mean, I don't have any idea. But I felt, especially this time of year, that this would be an appropriate venue to just kind of bring this to everybody's attention and see what possibilities may be out there for getting together or creating some sort of task force or something to take a closer look. You know, maybe, maybe I'm a little bit jaded in the sense because of the work I do, I see so much of it that it affects me personally. But, you know, in having seen that, it's just kind of frustrating to see it going on and on. I'm not suggesting that there's a solution that will get rid of everything. I don't believe that to be true. But as a community, I'm curious as to how, you know, if we took a look at this problem, what kind of solutions might we be able to come up with? How can we do things a little differently, maybe a little better, and include a broader group or diversity of, from the business interest to the nonprofit interests and those kinds of, looking at it from that kind of standpoint, maybe the medical community, or the religious community, the business community, the nonprofit, and see, you know, kind of get a sense of where everybody thinks we are and how we might do something a little differently to maybe alleviate or let these figures go down. But anyway, thank you very much for the time. I know you've got a lot of work ahead of you. It's good to see everybody. My councilman, Mr. Manley, thank you, good sir, for the work you do.
Appreciate it.
And for your service. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Vic Verma.
Steve.
Uh-oh.
Old age. Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. I wanted to talk to you briefly tonight about the efforts that we have with respect to the Affordable Care Act. I'm Vic Verma. I'm with Organizing for Action, and I'm also a board member of Special Health Resources of Texas. Special Health is, Special Health Resources of Texas has the Navigator Grant for enrolling folks in the Affordable Care Act exchanges. I'm a board member. My good friend Steve is the president of our board. We are working very hard to get the word out and to get folks enrolled in the Affordable Care Act. Last night, we had one of many informational sessions. We had 100 people at Red Oak Baptist Church. We were very grateful to Pastor Homer Rockmore for inviting us into his church because he came to me and told me, you know, I get a lot of questions. And so we decided to put this effort together. A lot of questions were answered last night, and a lot of people went informed and, I believe, ready to go get enrolled in the exchanges if they need to. My good friend Madeline Scott was there, so she can attest to the fact that we did, we're doing a lot of work getting the word out on the Affordable Care Act. So we're willing to go to any group here in Longview or in Gregg County. Unfortunately, there are some things when we go through our work that are problematic. And one of them was, last night, a friend of mine in Waco, who works with Enroll America, she was working with a potential, someone looking to get enrolled in the exchanges. He's, his wife is suffering from cancer, he works part-time because he needs to take care of her. And when enrollment status was checked, his income was $800 short of the level required to be, get subsidies in the exchanges. And because he lives in Texas, he does not qualify, there's no Medicaid expansion for him. And hearing about that story from my friend Kelly was painful for me. It was very painful for her. I mean, it's her job, but she went home very discouraged. And the only sin, so to speak, that this man had was the fact that he lived in Texas. If he had lived in many of the states that had Medicaid expansion, he would have been able to get that. And quite frankly, there's no other better way to say it than the fact that the state of Texas failed him. And so I encourage all of you, as you move forward, to encourage our state leaders to accept the Medicaid expansion. We've talked a lot about costs. We've talked a lot about those type of issues, and that's very important. But at the end of the day, I would not want to be the person looking this man in the eye and telling him, sorry, you don't get health insurance. And the last thing I will tell you is, we are, we are willing to talk to any group here in East Texas. I know it's a public forum, but I'm giving my phone number and email because I think it is that important. My telephone number is 903-522-1304. My email address is v2aggy2@yahoo.com. Thank you very much for your time. I'd love to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we actually have an Affordable Care Act event in Marshall tonight, so, thank you.
All right. Be careful in your travels in Marshall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Dean.
Okay. Counsel, that's all I have in speaker cards, with the exception of some P and Z items. Consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that counsel would like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion?
Self-voting.
I have a motion. The second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Zoning items. Item A, public hearing to consider, application S-13-04. Good afternoon, Mrs. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council.
I think it's getting a little woolly up there, bud. It's that cold weather, huh?
Little cold outside.
Baby, it's cold outside.
Natural camo.
Duck Dynasty. Oh, no. Let's go. This thing is deteriorating fast here. Sorry, Michael.
Oh, loris. Applicant American Tower is requesting a specific use permit for a radio and television microwave tower for a cell tower. This is in a single-family zoning area. Per the zoning ordinance, an SUP is required for these types of towers in residential This is at the Grady Crawford site there on Alpine Road at the intersection of Page Road. This is their existing buildings. The cell tower site would be located in this corner, would be a monopole structure. As you can see, it's owned single-family. There's general retail and office, multifamily. There is commercial across the street. When they approached us about this use, we determined it was more appropriate to get an SUP and leave that zoning in place rather than trying to zone to a heavy commercial, which, as you can tell by the future land use map, is not consistent with that, so it would protect that area in the future. Looking at the site, you can tell that it is well-screened with existing mature trees. The way they pick these sites, there's a number of factors that they look at, topography, area, coverage. You know, the tower would be, would be screened, but it would, you know, peak above that. This is just the first step in the process. This is merely just to allow the use of the property for the tower. They would still have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for a variance for the height requirements because the single-family zoning district does limit that height to just two and a half stories. So it's not near high enough for that, so they would have to still go and get the variance to actually build the structure. This is a, this is the nearest house to that property that does face, and it is actually located in a heavy commercial zoning district, the new school campus. There's a church facility here. Here is the trees around that property, and it's going to be going up in this corner. I'd be happy to answer any questions. P and Z and staff do recommend approval.
Questions, Mr. Shirley.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Frost.
How tall is it? I forgot.
I'll have to pull that out.
We have, we have Mr. Kirk here, who's the applicant. That, when we get to the public hearing, we can ask him that if you want. If you don't have it, Michael.
I've got it in here. It's going to be 150 feet to the top of the monopole.
That's what I was thinking.
How many stories is that?
That's, how many stories is that?
A bunch.
10, 12.
10.
10, 12, 10. How far is it from there to the road? Airline, Alpine?
It's probably going to be about 200 feet, plus or minus, from here, direct line across to here.
Okay. Other question, Mr. Manley.
Did you say it was going to be in that corner right there? I couldn't tell on my, on my tablet.
Yes, sir. It is going to be located in this corner right here.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you know what those things do? You being the telephone.
Well, they make, they make good flagpoles.
I'm sorry, is it, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
Like it.
Mr. Crawford's property, is it, did I misunderstand you, or is it zoned, is it kind of grandfathered? What's actually, is there actually zoning on his property?
Correct. It's owned single-family, so it is a grandfathered, existing, non-conforming use.
All right, now, across the street going north on Alpine, you said, it looks like to me you've got large buildings there. Is that still zoned family on the office?
No, the, the house that's right across here, the White House, is zoned commercial or it's heavy commercial. There's neighborhood services, general retail for those business occupancies.
Well, are those, is that a church across there? What are those establishments on the?
I believe the church is right here.
Well, if you go back to your overhead picture, I'm looking, if you, where Page Road is there, if you go, those, those border Alpine, those are.
I believe that's an assisted living facility.
Okay.
And I believe there is a church up in this direction.
Okay. All right. But that, that area in there, what is it zoned currently? Where your area is now?
There's commercial and then neighborhood services and general retail.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
How many feet did you say it was from the nearest house? Like, there are some homes, like, right immediately on the other side.
Scaling off of this plan, from, from this corner directly across this direction, it's plus or minus 200 feet.
Okay. And that's the nearest house, like?
It's going to be a little, yeah, it's, the nearest house is going to be this one right here. So, you know, diagonally, it's, it's going to be more than 200 feet.
So 10 stories, because part of that street is commercial, well, you have commercial buildings on one end, then you move into the residential. So when you think about 10 stories, how's that going to look aesthetically? Is it, is that really a good fit? I guess that, is that what you all determined it is a good fit? It would be appropriate?
One of the reasons that we felt it was appropriate was that for coverage for this area, this is probably the farthest location away from the residences that has a lot of mature landscaping and screening that would try to hide it.
Does it have to go there, or could it not perhaps be located closer to this school, maybe, or?
I can't answer that.
Were there any other alternative locations looked at? I guess it's my question.
I can't answer to that. Maybe the applicant in this hearing can speak on that.
Because I'm a little concerned that it's, I understand that there are commercial buildings on one end, but then you move immediately almost into the residential portion.
Sure.
And if I lived there, I probably, I would not want that.
Where's the residential portion right there? Right?
Yeah, there, there's a house right here. There's a rental property.
And then you go around the corner, and then that is.
And then there are some houses here in the neighborhood here, and then up here, but, you know, the Builders Association building is here, you know, for, to serve this area, which it's my understanding they're trying to serve, you know, the topography out here, there's, there's some lower areas. Based on what they're telling us, this was one of the best, you know, best, and there's a number of factors that they look at, but this was one of the areas that they identify as being the best fit.
What did you say?
Well, hang on.
I'm sorry. What did you say about the Builders Association? I missed that, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, this is.
Oh, their building is on the other end.
Right.
Right. I'm familiar. Right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frost.
Okay, north of there, then, that could be developed in the residential. Is that right?
It is zoned multifamily three. And interestingly enough, multifamily three zoning has essentially no building height restriction. There, there's a note in the ordinance that says it's based on the distance from the road, you know, half the distance. It's a very complicated, but basically, as long as you've got 50 feet from the road, you can go as tall as you want.
Any other questions? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Tommy Turner.
Oh, good evening. I'm here tonight basically because I think it's not a good fit. It's not a good fit because everything around, going up and down Airline Road, is either a church, a nursing home. There are homes, if you, if you turn and go off Airline, off of Eastman, you've got homes, you've got Life Bridge Church, you've got the Builders Association, you have my property at the corner of Page, and Alpine, which is an old home that I have lived in. And if you continue to go up the road, then you have another church, you have assisted living. Putting a cell tower in this area is not a good fit. Now, it's interesting to me that to put a cell tower, the way I just understood, Mr. Shirley, it has to be heavy commercial?
No, that is allowable in single-family with the SUP.
With the SUP, but if you, if you, if without the SUP, you have, it has to be heavy commercial?
Not necessarily.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm not going to get into that. That's above my head. But they're wanting to put a tower in a single-family residential area, at which there's homes there, there's multifamily all around it. I mean, selfishly, I own a piece of property right there. I don't want to look at a cell tower. I don't think anybody else up here would either. So I'm against it.
One, one thing, I mean, I've seen these cell towers all over the community in the residential areas.
Where?
Well, up in Spring Hill, isn't there one up off of Hawkins?
Well, if you'll, but, but the majority of them are in commercial areas, Jay.
I understand.
I've driven, I mean, I drive this area too, and I've looked the last couple of weeks. I'm not saying there's not any.
No, I'm not, I'm not debating you about what this right, wrong difference.
But that is not, that is not a good fit for a cell tower. And, you know, you can put, there's, there's, there's got to be, and again, there's got to be a lot of places in this town where you could put another one.
Well, we're going to hear from the applicant.
So, okay, I understand. But when you go down, again, once you go down that road, I mean, there's, you know, you can talk about heavy commercial or whatever, but there's nothing heavy commercial up and down the road, except for maybe Crawford Construction. Everything else is either a home, like I said, the Builders Association, there's two churches, or three churches, there's assisted living, and then if you turn on Page, that's residential. If you go up and take a left on Eden, that's all residential. I mean, you're, you know, it's, it's just something that I just don't think needs to go there. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, Dave Kirk is the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Name's Dave Kirk. Address is 1901 Royal Lane in Dallas. Representing the applicant, which is American Tower, they are more of a tower company, just builds the infrastructure. The tower itself will also, if approved, would also, would immediately have AT&amp;T on the tower. the tower. So, essentially, the preliminary usage and coverage would be for AT&T and their customers in this area. And they initiated the search for this location because of a need from their customers in Longview. They're wanting more and better coverage in this part of the city. The challenge we have in the industry is providing coverage to residential areas. This is certainly an unusual situation in that it's, we're proposing on a single-family property that is clearly not being used as single-family. It's very commercial with the construction company. And right across the street is a commercial property that's being used as single-family, so it's, it's a little bit unusual and, but if you, in looking at the zoning map for this area, there's a whole variety of zoning districts in the, in the region, but I think the land use plan really gives a good indication of what the vision for this area is as far as the city has come up with over the years. And it's, it ranges from light to medium to heavy commercial for this whole area, which is part of the reason we chose the area. As staff mentioned, the terrain is part of the reason we came up with this height. It is flowing, there's mature trees out in the area. I was out this afternoon and was looking really at the corner there of Page and Alpine and, you know, I think from, I can't say definitively, did some kind of rudimentary geometry on it, you know, from that residential property right on the corner, looking up at 60, 70-foot trees, you know, line of sight, you know, I think majority of this tower, if not all of it, would be blocked by the trees visually to that home. You know, no guarantees on that with my basic geometry, but I think the distance being, I measured it out to be a little over 350 feet from that front porch of that house to, to where our tower is being proposed. So, again, it's a location we felt because of its usage and its location was a good fit for us and, you know, we'd certainly like your approval tonight and I'll answer any questions you have.
The, the property owner that's opposed asked a question, will ask of you, have y'all, did y'all consider other, other locations for the tower and basically why that particular location?
Yeah, we, you know, when we get a search area from AT&T, we, you know, it's usually about a quarter-mile radius, so it's not a gigantic search ring, as we call it. And it was centered in this area. So, you know, I wasn't involved in the actual acquisition, real estate acquisition portion of this project, but we do look, you know, for things that can be, of course, we need to find a willing landowner and we need to find something that we can get proper approvals from the city on, you know. I threw up the red flag the first time I saw this because of the single-family residential, but then again, once you look at the use and the land use plan, you know, my, my initial concern was gone because I knew we could, you know, the use is not single-family. So, we felt, again, based on the terrain, the location, like staff mentioned, that the tower is kind of buried within the, the tree area, that it was, it was a good location for it versus kind of sticking out, maybe if it was on the school property, it would stick out like a sore thumb more than it would in the trees.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Kirk? Go ahead, Mr. Frost.
Do you have difficulty with reception out in these neighborhoods?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is this what?
Yes, sir. That, AT&T or really all the carriers, they don't invest the considerable amount of money it takes to put up a new location unless they get quite a bit of customer feedback that, you know, we're obviously, we're probably all aware that everywhere you go, everywhere you drive, you see people punching away on their smartphones in their car or walking down the street or the homes. People want to be able to use their devices, their iPads, everything in their homes more and more these days, and so they're demanding, you know, that coverage inside their homes.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you.
Okay, just a second. That is all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter, maybe didn't fill out a speaker card? Okay, if not, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Manley, you had a question?
Yeah, this is not my district, but I'm going to speak out on this. I think we should do this for two reasons. One is, there's more and more devices being sold every single day and all of us have our cell phones, our iPads. We need devices, we need towers like this. And that's only going to get, become worse. And whether you're an AT&T customer who will benefit from this right away, I would imagine that once you sell the tower at AT&T or if you keep managing it, there'll be other companies like Verizon and others added. So, it's acumenical in that regard. Secondly, I just don't see it as obtrusive. If this was already a fully developed neighborhood and where we see all those trees, had rows and rows of houses and streets, I'd probably feel differently. And I'm certainly sensitive to the homeowner's concern, I just don't agree. It's on a piece of commercial property. The gentleman from Dallas mentioned the light of sight, you know, I could probably make an argument, it's probably still going to stick up some. But folks who drive all over this town every single day and there's cell towers, there's water towers, there's all sorts of power lines, and they really do become more or less invisible once the, we get used to them. So, I see it as a trade-off and I just don't see it obtrusive and I will vote in favor of this.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Allen?
Mr. Shirley, it's a bit of a question. Have we heard anything from the property owner that's the larger forestry or tree area that's north of here?
I, I have not.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. If not, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion, second or a favor, say aye? All opposed, motion passes.
There's one no.
So, we have a no? Oh, speak up, lady. Okay, we have one no. Okay, sorry. Okay, we'll go to action, excuse me, zoning item B. Consider PD 13-12.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. This applicant, Golden Corral Corporation, is requesting a rezone from planned development, PD 88-4 and PD 08-03 to planned development, general retail, to allow for new, new restaurant development site. This right here is their proposed site plan. This is on the site adjacent to NUCES. They would share access onto Loop 281, which is a temporary access until future drives can be established that meet spacing standards. They are not proposing any driveways onto Skyline. At the P and Z meeting, there, there were several people in opposition to this and, and I did forward you guys the, the letter that we had received from one of the property owners and then the other note that we got from Mr. Beavers. And, and I believe that we have had an opportunity to go through and address most of those issues as far as the drainage and signage and lighting. They did revise their plan to include a four-foot fence. This dotted line right here represents the location of that four-foot fence with, there is a note that, that says that they will have solid, mature landscaping that would reach a potential height of five feet. I think red-tip fatignas is what they're proposing, so that would be a natural screen also. Mr. Spat that had sent the letter requested that and he is satisfied with the plan. I did receive an email back from him today and he was satisfied with the plan. So, I would be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I think that we addressed most of the concerns. I think the, the other main concern that's, that's left is the Clay Street access point. You know, back in 88, this area, and I'll go to, this area right here was slated for an Albertson's development and at that time, that was the only encroachment of commercial development slated for this area. They were going to have three driveways onto Loop 281, three driveways onto Skyline. And the plan was for that to not encroach beyond that. Since then, looking at our future land use plan, I think the community has looked at this area as an area for redevelopment to turn into loop frontage and we've kind of started that plan with the NUCES development. You know, the, the CPU building, when that was developed, it was kind of developed just kind of on its own. We've taken the approach that this needs to be planned development with, you know, site plan approval by council so we can ensure that there's connectivity between all of them, that it all develops in the manner that we want it to. You know, obviously, there's residences, existing residences that are there that we do need to take appropriate measures to, to protect them. And with the screening and buffering and fencing that's proposed and other existing ordinances that we have for lighting, encroachment and noise nuisances and things like that, we feel that this is a good, a good plan that, that meets, you know, that, that objective. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Allen?
Are they just going to have the one, just the one entrance that they're going to share with NUCES? Is that going to be their?
That will be the primary entrance. They will have shared access across the front. Let me go back. And then they will have connection into the existing Clay Drive, currently Clay dead ends, you know, by allowing that to connect and be open and free. It does allow for secondary fire department access since we won't have it on Skyline like we do with NUCES. It's not required from, for that reason, for the Golden Corral. However, Clay Street is non-conforming because it is greater than 150 feet without a turnaround. So, you know, it would be good for emergency access for the neighborhood.
Anybody else? I'm not deciding, oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Shirley, if I was looking on this want list that an individual sent from that particular area, they just wanted some like no litter signs, children at play, I don't know of anywhere around town where you actually do that.
No, those are not typical signage that, that we put up or, you know, that the city of Longview does. I know one of the requests was for speed limit signage and we've talked to Public Works about that. So, but the other sign is not typical, you know, city signage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This item, go ahead.
You might speak to the noise of the trucks and garbage trucks and things, what we might be, have to be looking at.
Yes, one of the concerns that, that Mr. Beavers brought up and, and we hear it quite often is limiting the hours that commercial garbage collection can occur next to a residential area. Currently, we don't regulate that and it's not something that I feel we can regulate through the zoning in a zoning request as a condition, because it's kind of outside of the bounds of what Golden Corral is controlled of. But through our nuisance ordinances, we do regulate the hours of operation for construction adjacent to residential areas, so that might be something that we want to look at in the future, because that is something that we hear quite frequently, you know, about the, the garbage cans clanking at 5:00 in the morning.
Trucks delivering and things like that.
Okay.
The other thing was no alcoholic beverages, to be sure. We have no control over there, right?
Correct. And I think under our current zoning, we don't regulate the beer and wine sales at restaurants. Now, we do the mixed beverages under our zoning. Now, we don't do it with the private clubs through our other ordinances, but we still do through the zoning. So, if they wanted to serve mixed beverages, they would have to come back and amend to this plan. And I don't think Golden Corral is corporate company, they serve alcohol, but I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
And then the issue of music, I don't think they play anything like that.
No, and in our nuisance ordinance, we talk, there's, you know, we regulate sound beyond the property line for amplification equipment and PA systems.
And the satellite dishes?
Satellite dishes, I'm not aware of an ordinance on that.
That was kind of a tack on.
Yeah.
While I'm, while I'm at it, let me get a bigger satellite dish.
I think in the past, we did regulate the old, you know, 12, 14-foot big satellite dishes, you know, but we don't do those anymore. We're not going to, yeah, we're not going to restrict somebody from putting, you know, a dish on the front of their house if they need it for reception on the typical 18, 24-inch dishes.
Anything else? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Arthur Price. Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
Good evening. I have two pieces of property there on Clay Street and I'm against the actual usage of Clay Street as entrance and exit on this. I've already lost renters because of NUCES and the traffic that got, that went through there. They put up ballards to keep people from going through there. They drove around them and still go down, up and down the street. It is a problem because Clay Street is not a big street. It has a bar ditch on one side, it's already sloughing off, it's, it's, if anybody parks in the street like they do in the evenings, you won't be able to get through there but one car at a time. Even when you get all the way down to Skyline, you can't pull out onto that highway because Clay Street is so close to the intersection there at the loop. So, it doesn't do a whole lot of good for people to go down that way. If they do, they're going to have to cut back down through Cathy Street and over to Skyline before they can even get out on the, on the Airline. The, when all this was started back with Albertson's and all that, it was agreed in this room that Clay Street would never be used as a through traffic for any commercial venture. And that's, they didn't let CPU do it, they didn't let the bank do it, and they didn't, they didn't let NUCES do it either. They put ballards up to keep them from doing that. There are people on that street, there's, there's, every house there is occupied except for one, and it's just going to create a huge problem for, for that area. I've already been informed by my tenants that if they do that, they're going to have to move out because they have kids. The other things were, if they do go ahead with this project, that they, that they be required to put up the fence, because their fence will be five feet from my house that I have here at the end of Clay Street. If they put up their, whatever they're going to do there and put up their fence before they go on with all their construction, and, let's see, that's about it right there. The alleyway is ruined too. When they do this dog leg right here in the alleyway, I lose all my access to my backyard. There's a fence there, I could scoot down a little bit, but then I'd be on top of water meters and sewer cleanouts. So, I can't, I can't scoot down, I'll lose all access to it. They're cutting half of the alleyway out. But the main thing is Clay Street. It's not a good idea. The people just coming from NUCES that drove around the ballards caused a big problem there before, you know, I actually went out there and put up T-posts just to keep people from doing that and driving around there. I'm hoping that since y'all agreed to, the entrance for, on Skyline was agreed to on the Albertson's deal and zoning back then, that they would only have one entrance there, that y'all will also agree to the, the agreement we made 20 years ago, that Clay Street would not be used as a through traffic. If they put up a gate for the fire marshal with a key, that would be great, but for everyday through traffic, it won't work, especially when they get down to Skyline.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Price. Appreciate it. Stephen Beavers.
I live at 110 Skyline Drive. I think from talking to representative from the city, a lot of my issues have been addressed. However, one of them in particular stands out to me. They are going to put up a fence, but it's going to be a four-foot fence. Now, I've never heard of a privacy fence being only four feet high. I would prefer an eight-foot fence and a minimum of a six-foot fence. A four-foot fence would come up to about right here. And I understand on other sides of this property, they are going to put up either a six-foot fence that's going to be on top of a retaining wall or an eight-foot fence. So, I don't understand why the people on Skyline should be short-changed with a shorter fence.
Excuse me one second.
Yes.
I just want to ask Mrs. Shirley a question. And I didn't read in, in the, in our attachments, but are they required to put up a fence at all?
Typically, streets are the buffer themselves. We typically don't require a fence along the street adjacent to residential because it's kind of, has the opposite, opposite effect from an aesthetics perspective. We typically require landscaping in lieu of, with the NUCES development, they had a solid screen and we've had issues with them and their compliance. What they have now is not compliant. But the four-foot fence, as the, Mr. Spat had asked for, was not for the visibility of the site, but was more for a screen for headlights from the parking lot. And that's why, that's why they're doing the four-foot and then the landscaping was not to completely screen visibility of the site, but just for the impact of the lighting from the parking lot.
Well, I guess my question is, I appreciate that information, but my question is, is the developer is not even required to put up any fence, so if he chose not to put up a fence, he wouldn't be forced to put up a fence, or at least he's putting up a four-foot fence with five-foot red-tip flotillas or whatever you talked about. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Beavers. So, my point is, I understand you'd like to have an eight-foot or you'd like to have a six-foot. He doesn't have to put up any foot fence if he chose not to. He's doing this to try to accommodate some of the requests you've made.
Well, I don't understand why you stop at four feet. You know, the labor's going to be the same, put up the fence, you've got an extra, what, thousand? thousand bucks at most, extra materials to add a couple more feet on top of a fence. And they're going to spend over a million dollars with this project. That's pretty much evident by what they're going to put up over there. So I don't see why there would be a problem with adding, if they're going to go ahead and put up a four-foot fence, why not add two to four more feet on top of it? It's not a big deal to do that. And, and so I don't see any advantage for just doing that. But yes, I don't want to look at a parking lot of cars over there. I'd rather look at a fence with some bushes in front of it than a parking lot of cars. Right now, there's a really nice sycamore tree over there. I've enjoyed looking at it for years. It'll be gone, replaced by a bunch of cars. Another thing is, I don't want any access on Clay. I don't want any increased access on any of the residential streets whatsoever. And I don't know how, if you're going to close off, leave Clay open to them or keep it closed off, I don't know how that's going to work out. But I, I think that even with the fact that they can go around the front of nukes and get on the Skyline, it's going to be extra traffic there anyway. So I'm opposed to any additional traffic whatsoever. If you do approve opening up Clay, then I'm going to ask you to go ahead and monitor the traffic on it now and then monitor the traffic later and see how it works out. I think that's pretty reasonable. If it's a tremendous amount of increase of traffic, then I think that you need to reconsider whether or not you want to keep that, that entrance to Clay Street open.
Okay.
And if I may, just, just say something, kind of clarify the history of this thing. There's kind of been an idea that when in 1977, I moved into that, I should have known about all the development that's going to take place. But when I moved into there, Justin Road was a two-lane road from about Drake on up north to maybe where the veterinary clinic was. There were no commercial businesses on, on Justin Road whatsoever. Right across from Skyline, where Olive Garden is, that was a big stand of pine trees, about 30, 40 feet in the air. The mall was still under construction, hasn't even been opened yet. All of the rest, where Albertby's is, that shopping center was not in existence. The shopping center where Hobby Lobby is, that was not in existence. The shopping center where Red Lobster is, that was not in existence. Where Albertsons is, that was not in existence. Almost nothing for a mile or two. West of Justin Road on the loop was developed for business, except what they were doing for the mall. Probably at least a half mile, maybe all, I guess all the way down to Forest Street and beyond, there were no businesses on, on the loop from Justin Road all the way down there. There's no way that I could have known that that was going to be a commercial development. But we're, you know, the rumors out there, that was something we should have anticipated. Nobody anticipated any houses being demolished there until 1988, when a developer from Tyler had wind, that Albertsons wanted to come in. That's when the, the comprehensive zoning plan was changed and we were stuck with consequences ever since then. I wanted to move into that house because I was living in Longview Heights, in a better neighborhood and a better house, but it was in the, in the Hawthorne School District. I wanted to get my kids into a better school district and that's the reason why I moved into that neighborhood, have a good place to raise kids, quiet neighborhood in Longview school system to do that. Well, one of my kids has a PhD and he's a tenured professor at the University of Texas. The other one doesn't have quite as much higher education, but he makes more money working at a real high-tech place up in, in Sherman, Texas. So it did work out. There's, there's a lot of things besides just commercial development in the city. A good residence, initial neighborhood to live in is extremely important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Beavers. Okay, and I have Robert Manley. Robert's with Manley and Associates, I guess the engineer of the project. Did you want to speak or are you here strictly to answer questions? Any questions of Mr. Manley regarding this project?
How about the six-foot fence?
How about the six-foot fence?
About the six-foot fence he wants.
They, we do have a six-foot fence on the retaining wall. The retaining wall at its highest point is five feet, so it will be 11 feet up in the air from anybody on the east side of the wall. As far as back at the parking lot, we wanted to, it was my understanding, what we were trying to do was block the headlights from shining across. And before we had the fence, we, we, I asked the landscape architect to put extra high landscaping in. So we're specifying a five-foot landscaping bush, which will be above the fence. And again, this was all in an effort to screen headlights and movement of, of cars in the parking lot at night. They, my concern is, is if we go higher, is because we only have access off of the north side of the property, that in an emergency, worse comes to worse, then we've got an eight-foot fence along nukes that could come down now that we have, if this is approved and this commercial establishment is built, that's a, that was a screening wall to those to the east, is any type of access at all. So with, at least with a four-foot fence, if a fire truck were to pull up on that side, they can throw, at least throw a hose over the top and jump the fence. Should be, should that be the last case effort to, to provide some type of emergency service there? Because again, up front, we have one entrance from two directions, but ultimately, we need, you know, if for any reason there were a wreck in one of those entrances, that access getting to the site would be better if it were four-foot than six-foot. Could it be a six-foot fence? Yes. But I'm sure that the owners of the, of the restaurant wouldn't mind people seeing the restaurant from the backside if they can. At least they'll see the top side of the building to know it's there to go around the block to go in to eat. So that's where we came up with the four-foot.
Okay, hang on a second. Hey, chief?
Yes, sir.
Can your firemen jump a six-foot fence?
We have saws that we like to make gates and fences with.
It will be wood. I figured I guys could jump a fence. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Beavers.
The four-foot fence was, was agreed to by one of Mr. Beasley's neighbors, but, and he wants a six-foot fence. The four-foot came from another man there, Mr. Spat, wanted the four-foot and he was agreeable to that. And then Mr. Beasley is, Beavers, Mr. Beavers is talking about a six-foot fence because he don't want to look at the back of the restaurant.
It's a pretty good-looking building.
Okay, parking lot and everything, huh?
Well, you won't be able to see the parking lot with a four-foot fence and five-foot landscaping.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Manley? Yes, sir, Mr. Manley, okay.
No, mine is actually of Mr. Shirley.
Okay, all right, thank you, Robert. Mr. Shirley.
Mr. Shirley, on the pictures that we were sent by the gentleman who was upset about nukes, using nukes as, as evidence of why flotillas don't work, I kind of agreed with him because they were sparse. Is there some, was there, is there a hole, so to speak, no pun intended, in our regulatory requirements, or are they just not following what we've told them to do?
What happened there is, they had a different line of screening when they first went in. It was a little more solid. At some point, they had a failure in their irrigation system and some of that died and they took them all out and put trees. And so we went back in and said, trees are not appropriate based on the zoning. You are required solid vegetative screen. And what they have does not comply. We've actually sent them a letter this week based on all this. You know, a lot of times, we don't know until we have adjacent property feedback, but they'll be receiving a letter that they need to, you know, comply.
Okay, thank you. So that's clarification. And so in reality, a flotilla hedge that's thick enough and appropriate, it's probably just as good, it may be even better than a four-foot fence because it's going to be a whole lot taller once it gets rolling and it's pretty doggone dense.
Yes, and, you know, and I think one of the concerns is that's at maturity and, you know, what's the level of maturity? And you can't, I don't think you can go and buy a full mature plant that's going to be, you know, like that. So there's going to be...
Put them closer together than what nukes has done.
Sure, and so, and that's one of the reasons they're agreeable for the four-foot fence is, you know, to give us some screening now until that, that hedge line gets mature.
All right, thank you for clarification. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this matter that maybe didn't fill out a speaker card? Okay, if not, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mrs. Shirley. Counsel, any other questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Action items, public hearing to receive citizen input on a substantial amendment. Man, am I going to read all that stuff? Mr. Martell Armstrong, we'll let you read all that. Man. Mary Ann, why you send me a book up here to read?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Willard, ladies and gentlemen of council, the 2012, 2013 action plan for the city of Longview Housing and Community Development, previously earmarked funds to go to an 78-unit apartment complex with approximately 84 of those units set aside for low and moderate income residents known as Amberwood. Due to various matriculations and things like that, we could not fund that unit anymore. So we essentially have to use those funds or lose those funds. Prior to using those funds or getting your approval to amend the action plan, we have to post and publish our intent on using those funds and host a public hearing. So action item A is to close out the public hearing process and action item B is to get your approval for those amended funds.
So this item does require a public hearing, correct? This is city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, so are there any questions of Martell before we start? Then we're going to open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards to this matter. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Now, we need a motion.
Item B would take us there.
Item B would take us there, okay? So that'll be, consider a resolution of the city, counsel in the city of Longview, Mr. Martell Armstrong?
Yes, consider a resolution for the city council of the city of Longview, Texas approving the amended consolidated action plan and home budget for the city of Longview fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Okay, questions on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion?
Aye.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item C, consider the acceptance or rejection of proposals for collection agency services in authorizing directing the city manager or the city managers designated to execute any related documents. Mr. Willard.
Mayor and council, thank you. I think we provided all the documents that are relevant to this action item and I wouldn't have any further comment unless you have a question of me.
Any additional questions, comments on things or information that's been received and et cetera? Yes, sir, Mr. Manley?
I, I think we need to accept the recommendation of the mayor's task force. When I read the official charter of the city of Longview under form of government, it says that the city council shall enact local legislation, adopt budgets, determine policies, and appoint the city manager, who shall execute the laws and administer the government of the city, which is exactly what the city manager has done. He had appointed three very qualified people, two of whom have been in front of our body. Sally Reese and Hank Hester are getting recognition of their own. Kimberly Adams from, from utilities department, also very well-qualified. I've spoken with all three of them. All three of them felt like that twice now, they have followed the direction of Mr. Willard and followed the instructions they've received and twice selected MSB. Now, I'd love to do business with somebody locally, I really would. The reality is that Linebarger, the other person that bid, does have a local office, but their office is nothing more than a legal office, that the people doing the collections are actually in Austin. So they are not, in fact, a local company. And in fact, they're further away from us than MSB is, which is in Houston. Secondarily, again, so the local issue is really a non-issue as far as I'm concerned, and that came up last month, that's why I bring it up. Secondly, again, we have a, a very fine city manager that we have many times recognized for his fine work and he has selected three very well-qualified people to go through this process. Yes, the process might have been different if one of the seven or eight of us had picked it, but we didn't. We picked the city manager, appointed him to pick the task force. They did what they were asked to do. We need to respect them and respect their authority and their hard work and select MSB based upon their, their recommendations. Thank you.
Okay. I, I would just, just for comments, say that I want to make it very clear that there's, you know, no disrespect or concerns for our employees that were asked to execute and, and make recommendations based on the information and the processes they received. So however the vote is, whatever the vote is, it has absolutely nothing to do with the employees that were tasked with making a recommendation. I think as Mr. Manley has stated, it's more process-based in, in the processes and, and how that process can be improved. But we can only ask people to, you know, execute with what they've been given to work with. So any other questions, comments? Ms.?
No, I don't have any comments. I would like to offer a motion.
Okay.
First, I want to speak first.
Well, go ahead.
Before we make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I, I looked at this just last, as Mr. Manley did, and I think this is more of a fairness issue here. I believe that the firm, that was awarded the particular contract, we hadn't actually voted on that yet, but in, in a, in a basis of fairness, both firms had an opportunity to go through the same process and one scored more than the other. And, and I use an example, if there's a football game and you made a touchdown, you win the game, and I come back and say, for example, well, no, you don't win, you know, we changed the rules at the last of the game. Well, we changed the rules. But in, in a basis of fairness, I think we should maybe take a vote and I think MSB did a great job in making their presentations. The team agreed with that and I think we should go and vote on it.
Comments recorded? First of all, we'll, I mean, there's a, I guess you, you want to make a motion.
Yes.
Do we need to make the motion now or do we finish comment or?
If you're through with comment, you can.
Okay, well, okay, then, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. It's, it's been a very well-discussed item. I actually took the time myself about two weeks back to make an appointment with Mr. Bolster, who's a local representative of, what's the name?
Linebarger.
Linebarger. Excuse me, I want to make sure I got the name. Visited with him for about an hour in the afternoon, went through the process. After very serious and thorough consideration, I still feel, as I did last month, that the city staff was correct in their judging and in their assessment and that MSB would be the agency that we need to do business with.
Okay, you had another comment?
Just want to respond to what you said. I, I agree that however we decide here, this, this is no reflection on how we feel about those three people. I brought that up for one reason, one reason only, and again, I go back to what I said in the city charter. If we vote to reject this, this is just micromanagement of part of the city council. This is not our job. Our job is to appoint or to hire the city manager and he picks the people who run the city. It's not the job of the city council to get into this type of decision.
Okay.
Not about processes, about micromanagement.
Okay, all righty. Now, you...
One comment.
Okay.
As far as the offices, you do have a contact here with Linebarger. No, but their office is somewhere else, but you do have an office here.
What's the point of that?
That you can, that you, that you contact. Well, you said they were not here, but they, they are, they are a point of contact. If you wanted to come back, somebody real quick, talk to them right here, you can call this office here.
Okay, I need to think about that because that's not true.
Well, that's, okay. Mr. Frost has the floor, he's made his comment, you've made your comment about it.
Okay, I recognize that they have an office here. My point was that the folks who are going to be doing the collections or in, or in Austin.
They contract that out, yeah.
And they, and so if you want to make contact with someone at Linebarger or MSB, both are going to be out of town. Yeah, I guess you could walk down there if you wanted to and make a payment. However, as the lady said earlier, 80% of the payments get paid by mail. So I just don't see that they are a local company when you consider...
Okay, the only thing, Richard, not to, but, but just to enter, Jack, I think what Mr. Frost is saying at least, and you mentioned talking to John Bolster and I think maybe everybody's talked to John Bolster, but there is a local somebody that you can go to, I think is the point you're making. Now, the decision may get made elsewhere, but, but I mean, there's somebody locally there. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just, the, the points where you can go under MSB, and I did discuss this with Mr. Bolster, in other words, they would have a half a dozen to a dozen different places here in town where you could take care of these past due amounts... places here in town where you could take care of these, uh, past-due amounts that you owe, uh, on a online, current, up-to-date situation. I had a fellow mention to me the other day, in the old days, in City of Longview, if you had a past-due fine or, uh, warrant, you need to carry your receipt around with you because the record-keeping wasn't that good, and if you got stopped, you better have that receipt, or they were going to take you to jail. So with MSB's active online portal, you would have a, um, accurate, on-time, uh, payment of your obligation.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, um, you had a motion that, that you wanted to make?
Yes.
If you want to make your motion, make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal submitted by Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of that motion, say, or say by, by saying aye and raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes. Okay, item, uh, the next item is going to be, well, no, community interest. We'll start with Mr. Sims.
Well, naturally, the first thing I want to say is, uh, I hope everyone in Longview has a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Watch yourself New Years, don't, uh, don't drink too much and cause problems. We don't need that, you don't need it, and we don't need it, so...
You know, he went right over that one.
Uh, you notice who I'm looking at?
Yeah. I don't go anywhere.
No, I was looking at...
Oh, okay, okay. All righty, Mr. Garrett?
All right. Uh, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to say congratulations to those individuals in the fire department that got, uh, their promotions on Tuesday, and I want to say congratulations to them. Uh, number two, Coffee with a Councilman, with kickoff on Monday...
Whoa, whoa, I thought it already kicked off.
No, not yet. Monday.
Now, did you already have a kickoff meeting or a coffee?
A prototype.
A prototype. Yeah, we'll get you to tell us all about that prototype.
But...
I understand it was a prototype, all right.
But, uh, Coffee with a Councilman will kick off on Monday, January thirteenth, thirteenth, 8:30 AM at Dev Downtown Cafe, 103 Tyler Street. What can we do to improve the southwestern district? Uh, please drive safe and sober during this holiday season, and there will be extra officers doing, on the streets. And fourth and last comment, Merry Christmas, everybody, have a Happy New Year, and God bless you, see you in 2014.
Go ahead.
All right. I want to begin by thanking Ms. Lynette Goodson for sharing this Preservation Longview newsletter with all of us today. It's great to know this project is ongoing, um, having supported it prior to being a council member, so thank you for that, Lynette, and let's support that as a community if we're going to move forward in trying to restore such a great, uh, place. Um, secondly, on Sunday, December the 15th, I am proud to say that Growing Valley Baptist Church, um, will be having their rededication of their new facility, and I want to thank city staff, Keith Bonds, Kevin Cummings, your groups, your departments, for your working with their engineers and bringing that facility back to life. A little-known secret, that is my mother's home church, and of course, I will be there at 3:00 PM Sunday for their, uh, rededication. And I'm going to invite the public again this year to come to St. Mark's CME on Saturday, December the 21st, for our annual Christmas music, musical. I think it begins at 6:00, I'm not quite sure, but, uh, do come, we'd love to see your, your faces, and just want to thank everybody in our community for your support, um, anybody that may be watching. More people watch Channel 5 than we know a lot of times, and I want to just tell people thank you for the phone calls, thank you for the emails, thank you for the letters, and thank you for the continuous prayers.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Frost?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Okay. Mr. Richard?
Yeah, a couple of things. Today was a, was a great day for the Sidney Bell Willis family. We dedicated the transit center in her name, it's in Ms. Williams' district, and I know she's real proud to, uh, follow in Ms. Willis's footsteps, and, uh, again, it was a great day, and, uh, saw a lot of her family up there. I think all of us agree, she was a, a princess of a lady, and a fine example, a role model for all of us. Secondly, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of a couple of folks. Uh, of course, Nelson Mandela was one of those people that, uh, was an icon, and one of the things I heard that he said, and of course, this is a fellow that spent 27 years in prison, he said, "Hatred is the poison you drink, hoping it will kill your enemies." I thought that was a great quote, and, um, so I want to acknowledge his passing, and also the passing of Hazel Hickey, who was a real icon in this town, I think touched a lot of hearts and souls. And then lastly, I want to thank all my friends for the consol, consolations and the emails and texts I got after the Alabama Auburn game. I'm sure they were all sincerely meant. Merry Christmas.
Roll tide.
Roll tide, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, thank you. Christmas can be a very stressful time. We're here to enjoy the birth of our Savior, and, uh, there's, um, it just seems like every year, there's more stuff, especially if they have children, excuse me, for parents that have children, there's more things on TV for them to buy, there's more new telephones coming out, there's more new electronic games coming out. Somewhere or another, I don't know how to do it, but I just wish those children, um, would recognize that just because you see it on TV doesn't mean mom and dad can buy it for you. I mean, they try, and we all, uh, we're all here for a, a special time of the year, so let's all enjoy it and, and, uh, be careful, and, uh, there's just, we, we can't afford all those things we see on TV. If the children could get that idea somewhere or another, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
All right.
Good job. Okay, we ask that all Longview residents provide their input as part of the Longview Comprehensive Plan. We've received almost 400 survey responses so far, and we hope to receive even more input. The surveys may be taken at longviewtexas.gov/plan. For more information, you can contact the city manager's office, 903-237-1021, and Ms. Robin will happily take the information from you. City of Longview offices and the Longview Public Library will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. Trash will not be collected on Tuesday or Wednesday. Longview Transit would be closed both days as well. And the City of Longview encourages you to recycle, recycle your Christmas trees, it's not even Christmas yet. Where's Dwayne Archer? You trying to get people's Christmas trees already? Let them enjoy them a little bit, man. I'm, I'm, I'm not reading the rest of that, we'll do that, no, I'm kidding. Uh, but you take your Christmas tree to the compost site located at 2020 Swinging Bridge Road. Um, on, on behalf of the city, uh, council and many employees that we have, we do want to wish our citizens a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, be safe and, uh, God bless you. Thank you. Uh, city council now will adjourn to, um, let me, let me tell you what we're going to adjourn to, we're going to turn this thing back on. Uh, executive session, personnel matters under Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Consider, discuss, and deliberate performance evaluations for the municipal judge and for the city manager. And Judge, we'll start with you here in a couple minutes. Uh, meeting has adjourned to executive session.